Okay, the meeting will now come to order. This is the regular session of the Logan County Board of Education held Tuesday, July 28th, 2020 at 5:00 PM at the administrative offices of the Logan County Schools. First up on the agenda is our pledge of allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence. Mr. Barry Mullins will lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda we have communications. Is there any communications?
Yes.
No communications at this time, no public speakers. Next up, we have presentations and reports. We have Mr. Mark Atkins, the Director of Facilities, here to update us on our facilities.
I'd like to thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you and to speak with you today. And just to give you an idea of what some of the things that are going on in our county. The last week, I've been traveling from school to school. And I've been going with Airgas, the company that is testing our fire alarm systems and our fire extinguishers. We've completed all the schools except for Mann High School, which they'll come in, not the rest of this week, but one day next week, they'll come in and finish that. And they also have to go to Ralph R. Willis and check the fire alarm systems up there. Also, they're going to have to go to each one of our bus garages and check the extinguishers on all of our buses. So that's a lot of steps for two men in the county to come in, to go to all the fire extinguishers and go through all the schools. But I didn't realize how many steps it was till I started with them. And they're very good, very good at what they do. Second, the second thing to tell you is that what we've, and this is a work in progress, we're giving you an idea of what's going on and trying to come up with a way to explain to you what has taken place. So if you look on your handouts, what's written in red is what has been changed since the last meeting. Buffalo Elementary now has all the equipment in and the final check has been completed. So we're ready for students at Buffalo. Mann Middle School, the gym floor, I'll go ahead and give you an update on all the middle schools so we don't have to repeat myself. We had them scheduled to come in and they have changed the date. So their next date that they're coming in to look at the floors and give us an estimate on sanding the floors and refinishing the basketball courts in our middle school, they'll be in on August the 4th. They will give us a...
Was there a delay, Brian?
I'm sorry.
Was there a recent delay?
Oh, well, it would just be a guess on my part, but I would think Rhonda and I discussed it this morning and we think that maybe it was because they're having problems getting with enough manpower or maybe having problems getting some supplies, but we really don't know at this point.
Can I say?
Yes, please.
They are super busy, but it is very difficult to get employees right now. They are booked until after the first of the year. So Rhonda and Mark and I have talked about, they're going to come on August 4th to give us a price. They belong to the co-op, so we don't have to bid them. Now, the company that did the flooring at Chattenville Regional High, that was a bid that was let out. She's going to check with some other companies to see if they are booked through Christmas. We would like this flooring to be done prior to basketball season. If we have to go with another company, it will have to be bid. But we do have the week of Thanksgiving. Other companies may have the same issues, but we don't know. So we are working on, we're still going to let them come on August 4th because we do not want to be pushed on down into March. But it is, we don't have a final answer as to when it can be done. And we're working with Rhonda to check with some other companies.
If, in fact, when they come to give us an estimate at all, if they say we can't get you until January, then we're talking about March because that would be in the middle of our basketball season, correct?
You are correct.
So this project may not be completed at all until the spring. Possible?
Possible, but they do have an alternative. They can come in and just skim the top. See, this is taking it down to the wood and refinish, just redo the floors, get through basketball season, but then that's going to be an extra cost. So Rhonda will work with them as well as some other companies to see what's our best option.
Okay.
We'll give you an update Thursday.
Next was the Mann High scoreboard and we found out on the 24th that it won't be here until September the 10th for installation, if, at that time. So it seems like all the companies are having a, maybe having a difficulty acquiring the supplies or manpower to carry on. But on September, well, on September 10th, we are expecting to have the scoreboard delivered.
How long's this scoreboard been ordered?
Long.
Does anybody know?
Well...
Because it seemed like over the last four or five months, we've talked about this scoreboard and we still ain't got a scoreboard. I mean, am I the only one picking that up or not?
Billy Jack did want specific blues.
He just wanted?
He wanted a specific color of blue. So he did work with Rhonda to find a company that had the dark blue because Logan is royal blue.
Right.
So they, Rhonda did work with him and it was ordered right after they both found, Billy Jack found the company he wanted to get it from. It was due to be delivered on July 24th, but here again, if you order something from Macy's right now, I used to get it in two days, and now it takes me two weeks. So given the pan epidemic situation and the employees, employees are, this scoreboard is specific for Mann High School. It's just not one we ordered out catalog. You know, it's got Mann High's name and all that, but you know, companies are really having trouble right now finding employees because they are home drawn unemployment, which I don't want, but it is a difficult time for a lot of vendors.
I'm just wondering, does Mann High have a home game before September the 10th? They do?
The West Virginia SSAC, West Virginia SSAC put out new regulations again today, and I have not read those yet, but Ms. English, they do not send them to the superintendent or the assistant superintendent, but Ms. English does always graciously send them to us. And it did have face shields inside helmets. I glanced at it and I have not read it entirely, but I will do that and give you an update on football season on Thursday.
They're changing hit to the corner by the railroad tracks at the end of the field at the locker rooms, am I correct?
At the lower ends of...
And they're gonna do hit kind of like what Chattenville did with the center blocks and all that.
That's my understanding. That's what we were told up there when we met in June, I think it was. But I'm like you, this has gone on a long time.
Well, when we started this, this was the reason, the reason we wanted to be updated as a board to know what we can tell people. So that's the reason we're asking you questions every day. Just, you know, just like you said, they'll say, well, it's been ordered, like Mr. Miller said, it's been ordered for how many months now? We haven't seen that. We need to answer the board to tell them, and that's the reason.
February from my understanding.
Could be.
February.
The bad part about it, there's people at Mann thinks that they're not going to get that new scoreboard this year. They said it to my face, said, hey, what's going on with the scoreboard?
We always say...
We ain't gonna get it this year, just like the locker room, the new locker building for the locker room. They don't think they're gonna get that this year either. I mean, maybe I've got lost someplace, I don't know, but it seems to me like it takes awful long to get anything done.
We have, we do see...
Now, I don't know what the problem is, but there's gotta be a problem someplace. I mean, you can't blame the situation we're in on every item that we've got doing construction work on. I just don't believe it. Maybe I'm wrong.
We send the purchase orders to the school. When we order something, we send a copy of the purchase order to the school so the school knows it's been ordered.
We could have ordered this earlier, Harold, but it was caused by wind damage. We had to, we had to give with the insurance company and see how much the insurance was going to pay. And I too, I agree with you, but once again, when you deal with insurance companies, that'll stretch things out.
I'll say that I share Mr. McMillan's sentiment in the sense that there are a lot of projects, which is why we've asked for some updates, because we want, when we review a project and approve a project, there needs to be a timeline as to when it's being worked on and when the anticipated finish date will be. So I fully, I fully agree with you and hopefully we'll be able, as moving forward, that as a school system, we do a much better job of making sure that things are completed in a timely fashion, because I don't, in lots of ways, we've not done that, in lots of ways. So I agree with you. I would also add to, I know that when we were there for graduation a few weeks ago, that there were some continuing issues related to the field turf. The field turf, that it was hooved up. Do you happen to know if that has been looked at?
No, sir, I have not been made aware of the hooves in the field turf.
Well, without the grass growing up in it, they said there was grass, weeds growing up in it.
Well, we had, we had a company come from Charleston and sprayed the field. They came too early, I guess, because it has started growing again. But in Chattenville and Logan, we made sure that anything that was coming up was taken care of.
The covenant came, it did do it, yes, sir, somehow to take care of.
Yes, yes, ma'am. And Mr. McMillan, I think that your questions are right on point and you're asking questions that obviously a lot of other people are wondering about, so good for you and maybe one of these days I'll give you a good answer, give you one that'll make you happy. At this time, we're at the mercy of the companies that we're working. Justice Elementary, the painting has been completed. The paint crew has gone on to Mann High School and they've been painting Mann High School for the last week. Logan High School, the power for the new locker rooms and wrestling room is, we are still waiting on AEP, no, I'm sorry, waiting on state electric to deliver a CT cabinet. And the CT cabinet is a cabinet that allows AEP to monitor the usage. Once it comes in, we can have, our maintenance crew can have the concrete pad poured and ready for installation within two days. On our elementary, the gym floor, they had a little trouble getting some of the materials, but as of right now, they are moving right along. The liner that goes underneath the gym floor is in place. I was there today and they have put glue, they've got glue on the floor and it looks like they're ready to start rolling out the basketball court. And we expect that will be, it'll end up being a beautiful court, so. Chattenville Middle School, it says we're waiting on the orange paint to come in, but the orange paint has been delivered and they are painting Chattenville Middle School when it should, it should be completed by the end of the, by the end of the, well, no, they're only working on weekends, so by next weekend it should be completed. And we talked about Cincinnati flooring already, so moving on, Hugh Dingus, the... Can we stop just a minute and go back to Chattenville Regional High School? Have we heard anything about the press box from Thrasher yet? I talked with Amanda Chevron from Thrasher and she said that Bill Ratcliffe from Thrasher had the information on that and he hasn't provided it to her yet. I know that we want, are we wanting, we are wanting that before football season and that's probably not going to happen, but...
See, I thought that was going to be done before football season down at Chattenville too. I think I've heard that the past few months on Instagram.
We'll discuss that, yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, okay.
Can you get them to explain on some of them things why they're not getting them on the deadline and make sure we don't...
I could have one of their representatives come and speak at our next board meeting.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
And that way you can get, you can ask...
That's why when they make a deal with us, something's going to get done, you know what I'm saying? We're six months down the road and we ain't getting it done and everybody's getting PO'd and, I mean, from us to you all to everybody else.
Well, I'll make sure that we have someone here for the next meeting.
And they could possibly participate virtually.
Yes.
They could participate virtually.
Like the lady did with the...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, because they, if they're going to give us a deadline, let them be held accountable.
Yes, sir.
You know what I'm saying? Don't you agree?
I agree, yes, sir.
Well, my problem is that if we, if we let them just keep kicking it on down the road, then they'll, they'll build something five years from now if we don't give them a timeline and tell them when we want it.
They have to be a little aggressive. I don't think we've been a little aggressive. I think that we just do whatever they want to do. We accept that they give us, but we have the challenge still to move forward.
I agree.
We'll arrange to have, at the next regular meeting, we'll have, we'll have a representative to say, virtually or in person. Okay, and, Hugh Dingus, the new serving line has been completed. It's not in red, but it should be. It has been completed. There's one piece that's missing. It's a cover for where the, where they get the utensils to eat with and it's open on the front and we're waiting on a cover to come through it, but it will be here, it will be here before school starts. The grease and oil trap has been installed at Ralph R. Willis. Also, our electrical maintenance crew is making plans to present to the board an option to complete bay two. It will be around $12,000, Bucky said, for equipment and we will install it, but that will take care of the second bay. There are four bays at Ralph R. Willis and we've done the first one. We're hoping to use this as future work, but right now we're planning on working on a project or a presentation for the board to consider. Logan Middle School, Justice and Mann High School are the schools that are being painted this summer. They've all been painted except for Mann High and they're, they're working on that now. East Grade demolition. They have been working down at East Grade, the schools, if you're not driven by, it doesn't look like a school anymore, but we have, we have done some research and we have talked together and talked to other companies and we feel like that we could save, save a lot of money by, instead of delivering the debris to waste management, which is, it costs us $85 a ton, we can take it, we can pay to have it hauled to Ashland, which is $27 a ton. And the work that we've done, we worked it out in Rhonda's office this morning again and to take a truck, a 23-ton truck to Ashland would cost us $1,100 a load compared to us taking a 23-ton truck to waste management, which would cost us $1,900, $1,900 a load. So that, every load that we take out, we're saving $800. And so we have worked it out to have a company come in and haul it away to Ashland and it's going to save us quite a bit, it'll be about half the price. to Ashland, and it's going to save us quite a bit, it'll be about half the price of what we've been, we've been paying.
And saves time also.
Oh, yes, yes, saves. They started tearing, well, the school's going down now, so, and that's what we want, we want to, we want the school, we want the property to be clear for the neighbors and for, for our, for our benefit, but it's going a lot quicker now.
Was not the price included in the tearing down of that building in the contract?
It was, yes.
And we're still paying, too? Are we still paying, are we still paying extra?
No.
Okay.
No, we're not. We've hired another company that's, that's going to save us a lot of money to come and haul the, haul the debris away for us.
I think, I think the question Barry is asking is when we signed the contract.
That was included.
Did not the contract include the removal, as they tore the building down, did that contract not include their removal of the debris from that building? I, I've never heard of, I've never heard of having a contract with someone tearing down the building and then you be responsible to haul it off.
I think the removal is separate from the disposing. Is that right?
Oh, okay. Well, I just.
That's new on me. That's new on me.
Yeah, well, I thought the same thing, Barry.
The, the place we were disposing at wanted all the materials separated, which was very time-consuming. And Mark, correct me if I'm wrong. But the, the, a place in Ashland, we didn't have to separate. Separating all that debris into different types of materials would take an enormous amount of time. So the Ashland dump takes it as is. So, so it was money and time, but we were responsible for disposing of the equip, of the materials, and that was in the agreement.
I called for, I've called actually three times now to get an answer for the Crooked Creek appraisal, and I've talked with Rhonda this morning, and what, they can't do the appraisal until a report is done. The heritage in Chattanooga is waiting on the report to be completed before they do the survey.
You're waiting on the survey?
I'm sorry?
You're waiting on the survey?
Yes, we are.
Who's in charge, who needs to do the report?
I think it's Precision. Precision.
It, it's the survey. It's the company doing the survey.
Okay.
Then they'll, they'll issue the survey report to the appraisal services.
That has been a while, though.
Yes, it has. I spoke with one of the workers two weeks, two weeks ago, and they said that we should have had it by the end of that week. I called again, and I called again this morning, or this evening.
We haven't, we haven't got any response yet.
But he was in a meeting, so he may have, may have tried to call later, but.
Well.
Okay. And with that, we are working on, at, working on the playground equipment, installing the playground equipment at Omar at this time, and Holden will be next. So, with that, I think we've caught you up, got you up to date with what's going on with our facilities and the plan that we're doing, so if we have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
One thing I'd like to add, the bids opened today for the Logan High School buildings. And if you all want briefed on that, we might need to go into executive session.
I could tell you one thing, if we tear anything else down, we really won't look at it a whole lot different. I hope so, because this has been a joke in our, at each standing.
Yes. I, I think it's been, it's taken more time than it should.
Now, once, you mentioned today that the bids were open for the Logan Athletic Facility. And then, I think the lady told us, then after the Logan bids were open, then the Mann's facility would be put out to bid. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, next week is the first week of August, so I think they indicated a timeline that they would open those bids by the end of August for the Mann building. I, I think that.
I think that's what she said, but I'll have to go back and look at my notes.
I, I think that's what I had in my notes, so, okay, thank you.
Serena?
Mark, I have one more question. No, hey, hey. We turned in a price for the tennis courts Logan High School to be redone.
Yes.
Can somebody update me who we're at on that? Debbie? You?
They turned it in.
They've turned it in.
Yeah, and it's just on here. And there.
I think they've already been redone. Well, no, our, there was a big crack in one of the courts, and that.
There was one turned in to get the cracks done, and then there was another one turned in to get them resurfaced. Five courts were.
In the quote, it said that it would take care of, it would be cheaper if it is Mann and Logan all together. That's what Justin turned in. So, no, that's.
Ms. Lucas has that.
We just fixed the crack, right?
Ms. Lucas has that, and I can speak with her and get an update for you Thursday.
Because that was turned in, I, I can't tell you the exact date. Debbie might know, because you brought it the night that Debbie wasn't here, and then we gave it to Trish. So, I'm saying that that's about the first board meeting in June that, that you brought, or Justin had given to you.
But we fixed the crack. Justin said we fixed the crack. All that is done. But there's more that they wanted done. You know, we can't do it in the winter, we're going to have to do it in the summer months. So, people are just wanting to know, know if it's going to be done or not. And the building that they want for the tennis court, is it painted over there, that little building? They wanted it.
I don't, I don't think it's completely painted, but they.
They want that little building there right there, for them to change clothes and stuff.
Yeah, the addition, we did the addition on it. Extended the garage, and made it locker room. I think it's almost complete. But I hadn't heard nothing about the tennis courts. That's.
Yeah, and just the other day, we were going to do it. I knew it fixed the crack, but I'm not, I'm not giving it for it.
I'll have to get with Ms. Lucas.
Counsel, do you have a question?
Not right now. I'll talk to the board.
Okay. Is there any additional questions for Mr. Atkins? If not, thank you very much, Mr. Atkins. Next up, we have Ms. Kathy Adkins. She is not on the agenda, but as this is a rolling item for us, she is going to give us an update on the virtual learning. Is she okay to stand there? Can, will that be able to be captured?
Or she can come over here.
She, she doesn't want to stand at the podium?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Danny just texted me a message. He just wanted you all to know that the free dump is no longer available to us. There was a.
Does it matter where she stands?
There was a free dump.
Right.
Where was the free dump at?
I'll put it.
I'm not sure, but it was local.
Kathy, would you be able to stand maybe over there? I want to make sure that, get you on the microphone.
We have had our survey for the virtual interest out for five days. So, in five days, I wanted to report that we've had 408 guests, meaning that there are 408 families in Logan County that are interested in virtual learn. So, as you see, the little pie chart there, it's only 8% of our students. So, we have 5,436 reported students that we submitted, so that makes us 8% interest so far. So, we, we're going to run this until Friday. So, as you look at your next page, I wanted to show you some other things that I gathered through my survey. We had 395 of those students are current Logan County students. We have eight new students coming from other West Virginia counties. We have two students coming from out of state, one homeschool student re-enrolling, and two homeschool students that want to re-enroll just to do the sports. The next thing you'll see on this report is the breakdown per school. So, do you want me to read those out so the public can read it, or?
No, we, we can look at them.
Okay. So, anyway, our survey's going to run till Friday, so come Saturday morning early, we're going to have the application process started. And every school will have the application on their website and on their, sort of, Saturday morning. The survey is good till Friday night at midnight. So, come August the 1st, the application will start, and that's when families that are interested, definitely interested in doing the virtual, they will come through our application. And after that, that goes straight to the principal, and each principal will be contacting these families and giving them more information, and we also will be providing some more information online. Do you guys have any questions about virtual?
Survey's where? On our site?
Yes, it is.
What site?
Logan County, V O E.
V O E dot Logan. Dot H L dot anything.
I also put the QR code on the front door, and I've noticed that some of the people has told me that they come to the front door and put your phone up to it, so they're getting really quick access to it.
And the survey's also on the Facebook page.
On Facebook.
That they can access that survey on the Facebook page by finding the post and, and filling that out.
We could pin it to the top. Maybe we need to, I don't know if Jason has pinned it to the top.
No, it's, it's gone. It's poor talk.
Okay, I'll pin it to the top tonight.
Okay.
It, it appears then that then these 408 pupils will be receiving delivery of instruction through virtual.
Yes.
So, that means that they will not be in our classrooms.
They won't be in the classroom, they'll still be our students. Right.
All right.
And they also get five breakfasts and five lunches delivered to their homes if they desire that on Wednesdays. So, that's something I didn't say the last time that I was here. Do you guys have any questions?
What other support will they be, be provided that they may, as far as their technology? Because one of the, one of the points that, that we've said is by going virtual, we, they do get that technology that Logan County Schools provides.
Yes.
How do they get that technology?
Technology support?
Yes.
Okay, that will be through Ms. Teeter's department, through the technology department. I'm not sure how they're going to get their support, but I talked to Ms. Darlene Dean Adkins the other day about this, having experience with the last virtual situation. If a student's computer goes out on Monday, they need a replacement on Tuesday. We need to have some borrowed, some loaners to give them, because they can have a lag of instruction time, because they get behind. So, we may be able to think of have, possibly having some loaner computers till that one gets repaired, because there is a turnover, and it takes a while for those to get repaired. Is that not true, Ms. Teeters? Like if somebody turns it in?
I've had a Berks gray.
Yes, it takes a little while.
Have to data replace it, you know?
So, we don't need, you know, a week of not having a device for those students to be able to complete their assignments.
Yeah, I, I know that they are on a timer as far as, once they log in, they, they have to complete certain assignments within a, a time period. So, so it is critical that they have access to a laptop or iPad or have, whatever they're, they will be using, so that, we need that policy, of course, in place, that we can, we can update their equipment if we need to as soon as possible.
Figure that part out.
How many do you have of those loans? Do you have an idea?
None off the top of my head, no. We, we converted all of our Windows machines to Chromebooks, so we have been plenty in, in each of the schools. Each car had 30 at the time, so, you know, most classes didn't have one, 25, 28, so they had all, all kinds of extras in the school. We didn't keep loaners here, so with that large number of people going virtual, it'll look much different this year, and we can have the near the numbers that we are going to have this year.
And I have one question you may or may not be able to answer at this point. And, and thank you very much for providing an update on where we are. Of course, I know that we will have some additional people as, as the week goes on, probably do the survey.
Ross Taylor.
I've received lots of questions related to what virtual will look like. To your knowledge, is there any video out there that the West, West, uh, West Virginia Department of Education has produced to show what a student's day will look like, or what logging on will look like, that, that we're able to show parents to help them make a decision?
I don't think there is a set video, but it's going to be easy to prepare one, so what we'll do is to get with the facilitator of our program, we will try to prepare the video with all the slides and show them step-by-step what it looks like.
Okay.
But, you know, I wanted to tell the parents, too, if they do decide to go virtual, there is a 14-day grace period. So, once they get to log in, I don't want them to feel like they're stuck. So, you know, once they fill out the application, they log in, they got 14 days to figure out, is this for me? So, during that 14 days, we're going to have an orientation. An orientation is an online Teams meeting orientation, where all these screens that you're talking about will be exposed. It'll be step-by-step. I'm pretty sure the lady from the State Department will participate in our orientation to help us to make sure our parents in Logan County understand this program thoroughly before they totally commit to it.
Okay. Because I think there's a lot of fear and apprehension in, lots of parents see that as an option, but they've asked whether or not there will be a teacher complement, whether there will be videos, whether, whether it will be similar to a Zoom meeting. And of course, I've told them, there, you know, there is no live instruction to it. There may be videos that are pre-recorded for a lesson or something like that, but there will not be live instruction from a teacher. But I think lots of, lots of our parents would be comfortable if they knew what it looked like to log on and, and to complete those assignments.
Exactly. And I'm in the process now of typing up some information for parents to put with that application. So, I'm calling the highlights of the Logan County Virtual Program. So, everything I can think of, I've been asked a lot of questions and a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls, and I've got back with all my people. So, I'm taking all those questions they've asked me, and I'm trying to develop a frequently asked question list for my parents here, and I'm also putting the highlights of the program. So, hopefully, any questions, again, I said it last time, just feel free to email me, and I'm getting back to you as soon as I can, and hopefully, we can get this organized.
Is there any additional questions?
Um, I'd like, after the, I don't know how our board meetings run, but if you could maybe at our August the 11th meeting, kind of give us an, an update, because it will be very, very soon, you know, the 14th will be the, end of registration, so even possibly, if you could give us some idea on the 11th, maybe come in.
Exactly.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. This is the approval of minutes for the meetings of 7:14, 2020, and 7:21, 2020. All members were in attendance. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Mr. Barry Mullins' motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Harold McMillan has seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved, five to zero. Next item is our action items. You please note that item A is approval of MOU with the West Virginia Military Authority for the futures, Future Leaders Program. Item B is approval of Perry and Associates to audit fiscal years 2020, 2021, and 2022. Item C is policy update 312012, substitutes in areas of critical need and shortage with a waiving of the three-week readings. Is there any comments about those? Any questions?
I make the motion that we approve the three items, action items.
I make the motion that we approve the three items, action items.
Okay, Dr. Pat Joe White has motioned.
Second.
Debbie Mendez has seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The action items were approved five to zero. Next, we have finances. We have a budget supplement, budget transfer, and schedule of invoices. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Mr. Barry Mullins has motioned.
Second.
Mr. Harold McMillan has seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The budget or the finances have been approved five to zero. Next up, we have personnel. We have a couple corrections to make in this item under personnel. Please note that what on the agenda was under B for professional to create, three LPN positions should have been placed under service personnel, so those will be under service personnel rather than professional. And the other correction will be to strike under C, under professional, C7. They have withdrawn their name, so we will strike C7. Is there any additional corrections? Hearing none. Please note that professional A, B, C, D resignations, E transfers, F, extension of 2020, 2021 contracts, and under service, we have A, B, C, and D.
I make the motion that we approve the personnel list as presented.
Uh, Dr. Pat Joe White has motioned. Mr. Barry Mullins has seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The personnel list is approved five to zero. Okay, next up, we have superintendent's report. Mrs. Atkins, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. She does not have anything for us. We'll start...we'll let Mr...Dr. Pat Joe White discuss item number 10, which is discussion about virtual county board member training.
In your packet, we'd all received information. Being on this executive committee, I had received this, and then I called Ms. Lucas, and she had a copy. We are required by state law to receive seven hours of annual training. We must receive seven hours in order to maintain our status as a Logan County Board of Education member, and this is this way for all 55 counties. However, due to the virus at all, we used to have this training. The option that was presented to us is we would have a fall meeting in September in Charleston, and we would also have a spring meeting in February in Charleston. Now, that's not saying that we won't have the February meeting, but the information that we have in front of us says that they used to use the Marriott as our training location in September. They have not been able to obtain the Marriott this September, so we are faced with the possibility of considering one of four options. And the four options are, and in this handout, it talks about, well, there's five options, but I don't know that one is at all doable for us. However, they want us to talk about this tonight, make a choice of what we would like, and then I would say that either Melody or myself can email our results back to Howard O'Call, so the organization can put something together. The first option that we have, and it's on the back of this handout, is live streaming of content. Now, I am...I believe that this live streaming of content is what Barry and Harold received when you all did your board member orientation. And we had some discussion of this at our Mountain State meeting, and some of the board members had attended that, and they were very satisfied with that. They said that that was a good presentation, there wasn't a lot of time wasted or anything like that. So that is the option A. Option B is also very similar to the live streaming of content, that we would go to a virtual training format for smaller or large contingencies. If we went to that, then I'd say A and B, we could all do as a board. Once they would develop the date, we could possibly meet down here, as you all did, and just participate in the streaming content and then obtain our seven hours from there. Or they may not be able to do seven hours at one time, maybe we would do three hours one time, four hours at a time. Online training, it could be a combination of both A and B, or it could be a standalone. We could pick a specific topic that we, as a board, felt we needed the most emphasis on. It might be something that we feel that as a board, we don't have enough knowledge to deal with. And then they could present, they could gather the data, give us presenters, give us information, and we could attend that. That would be specific for Logan County Schools. Then a training cohort would be where, let's say we feel like we need more information on safety. Let's say safety is our priority. Then they could survey us and put us in a group with other boards of education who have these same issues regarding safety. And then we would be in a training cohort, and we might be with seven other counties. However, we would all be sharing the same information and receiving the same information. So that's another option. And then the very last option is similar to above, and these...this would be live training cohorts, and it would be things that have...they would group us together. It would be like counties that have the same number of enrollment as we do, could be counties that have the same number of losing kids each year and are facing with declining enrollment. I'm looking at E to be able to...we could sit down and we could say, we are losing so many students each year. We would be...the cohort that we would be in, everybody in that cohort would be faced with declining population. And one of the things of the training would be that we would pull all of our ideas together to see how are we going to deal with this? Are we going to close schools? Are we going to cut back teachers? What are we going to do that we all have these same kind of problems? And based on what I've just gone over with you, they would like us to decide on maybe one, pick one of these five proposals out, and then maybe have a second one. So out of those, it's live streaming of content, which is, as I say, what you all received. Two is go to a webinar and have a team based on that. Three is online training, which will be a combination of the above and standalone. The training cohort would be those boards that have interest in the same kind of things. And then live county training cohorts would be, we would identify, they would identify three or four things, and it could be declining enrollment, it could be funding issues, it could be a variety of things. And we would be working with or training with groups of county board members who have the same scenario. So I just need your thoughts on that.
My thoughts, it's live streaming because I like, I get to hear everybody else's comments, and I like to get to hear how everybody interacts with each other, what problems they are having with their county, and we can all do it as a group. And it's more like us being there but not being there, so I like live streaming.
Now, is that what you two do?
Yeah, that's what we gotta still do then. It's just the first fourth, when do we do it?
We speak the day, one day next week.
One day next week, me and him does that, then we...that's a better...
Okay, so you all could have your answer.
Yeah, like Debbie said, because we could see what other ideas these counties has got and other people's.
And that...A would be fine with me. I mean, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Jeremy? Okay, what would be our second choice out of those remaining four?
Anything that we could do as a group.
Yeah.
Anything that we could do as a group that, excuse me, that it wouldn't be like one-on-one, I think, real well as a group.
What about, if that's the case, what about number four? Four would be the...four would be, we would be put into a cohort, which would be all our board members, plus it could be Lake, it could be Canal, whatever. And we would be then working on common issues like declining enrollment, finances, things like that. So could D be our second choice?
I'm fine with it.
I'm okay with that because I think generally speaking, the first option is that we can distantly do the live stream.
Because for that fact, we could all be here.
Yeah.
One together.
You're doing around 100 people, you know.
Yeah, so, okay, then I either...I could either do this or Melody can, and we'll give this information to Howard O'Call by the end of the month, by the 30th, I think he said.
Your first one was A.
The first one was A, and the second one was D.
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 Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. White. Is there any additional questions before we move on? Okay, if not, the next item is the board member concerns, discussion, or comments. Mr. Mullins?
I just like to say, Jeremy, I, you know, like marketing, they...we have a hard time understanding what you all see with the contracting and stuff. We've been asked questions unreal about things getting done, not getting done, just a little quicker answers and holding people responsible. When they tell us they're going to have something done, we want it done. You know, keep holding us off and pushing it back, that's no good. That's all I have.
Okay, Mrs. Mendez?
There's a lot going on, and we aren't going to be staying with the PR for the virtual and the homeschool and all that. Or have we done anything about any timeline for setting a banner, any timeline for being on the OVO or anything?
As of yet, they have not given me a timeline for...it has been on Facebook. That has started to be promoted, as well as Mrs. Atkins had talked about doing the survey to ascertain how many students want to do the virtual, which will also give us an indication of how many want to be in the classroom. That survey will end at the end of the week on Friday. The actual registration will begin on Saturday, so we will be promoting that. Again, I've been promoting, me personally, I've promoted the decisions that we've made as well as that survey to make sure that all the parents who are interested in virtual have that opportunity to say that they're interested. I think we just need some clarification, and as we said, I think there's a lot of parents who would be interested, but they just don't know what it means to be fully virtual, and we need to clarify that as soon as possible to them. And hopefully by next week, we will be able to have some PSAs put together, as well as some updated Facebook posts and PSAs, and to work with What's Your Opinion and the newspaper. I know Dylan's going to be running what we do, but also work with the newspaper to have those options out there and make sure people understand what the basic options are. Of course, there's a huge number of questions so far with what does virtual look like? What is my school day going to look like if I send my kids back two days a week? And I know that everybody's been answering those questions the best that they can with the informations out there. So hopefully by next week, we will be able, the start of August, to be able to be doing the PR part of that, to make sure they know what the options are, that way they can choose.
It's just 8% is not very much, and we get the county's kids.
Right.
That's a little concerning. And then plus, I think we should also emphasize that too. It takes how many credits to graduate to me?
Two.
Two. And if they do six virtual classes, county's credit, I'm wrong, 37 a student, but yeah. And they participate in sports and stuff. And that's what my pitch is being, and if they take credits if they're in ninth grade and they're in a private school or religious or whatever, in the virtual, they have to have, you know, just remember how many credits you are going to need to graduate, you know, all the colleges and stuff.
But given that 8% is interested in virtual, that means 92% intend to return to school.
Yeah, which is good too.
Yes.
Which is really good too, that most of my questions and concerns has been about virtual. Even though we're living, even though we're doing two days, you're still got two days online. Question is, I want to know, is it going to be recorded? Is it going to be recorded for if they work and they come home, or they just going to have to sit down in front of the computer and just, as they call it, leave it? Or will the class be recorded for you? Because class is going to be at a certain time, all right? That was what one mother said to me, she says, I work, when I come home, I'm tired. And if the class was recorded and I could rewind it and go over it with my child, it would be like a whole lot easier.
And it will be. Naturally, we do not expect children to be in front of a screen for six straight hours. There will be a scheduled time that the teacher will go live, and it will be during the direct instruction. Then there will be assignments made to the in-class students as well as the online students. Lisa had moved a touch panel board to her office Monday morning they moved it, didn't they? She planned to go over the weekend, but we came up with a better plan. She was going to go out to school and spend the weekend, but we came up with a better plan and moved a board to her office so that she wouldn't be out exposing herself to everyone and everything, so she could figure out how this will all work with it being asynchronous and synchronous. And so there will be a period of each class live, and it will look different at the secondary than it will at the elementary. The whole state of Georgia during spring, and I may have mentioned this, was that students were online at the beginning of every class. Our issue is that all of our students do not have capacity to have Internet in their homes. Lisa also participated today with Tim Konsat in a call with these broadband companies, and we are exploring some...these companies have some hotspots that we would purchase and parents would check out. That is still preliminary, and no guarantees with that. We have a grant due on Friday for additional...it is a competitive grant with the state for additional technology funds perhaps to use if we have the capacity to do some of that where kids check out hotspots. We had been told it was only certain companies, and Lisa was checking to see if we have coverage here in Logan County with those companies. And even within those companies like Armstrong, their mechanism to do that is different from another company. So it's...and I know that sounds like it's slow goings, but we didn't even know about that until last Monday. We've had a week, and we're trying to get on... We've had a week and we're trying to get on top of it. Now, once we know what the options are, then we will design a school day. We should have that by the second week of August. By the time the first week of August ends, we will have schedules because our staff are concerned also. They, they, you know, it's causing, the unknown causes the human being to have anxiety. And we want to calm everyone down so that things are not unknown. We want them on paper. We want pictures, visuals of what this school look like. But it's probably gonna take us by the end of, it's probably, we're probably two weeks away from that.
Just like Jeremy said, is the other parents are concerned with gatekeeper, with the gatekeeper. So, these parents are working, and they're working all day.
Right.
And they know these kids are not gonna get on the computer until the evening that they come home from their parents' mansion.
Well, all of them will be, be recorded. And they will be on demand. A student is home at seven o'clock, they can watch what happened in that classroom during that lifetime. They can watch it twenty-four seven, so at any day of the week and any time of the day. But the, but it will not be, we, we have no expectations that my five-year-old will be there for that screen. But of course, he will, those three days, he will have a certain time that he'll check in and the teacher will go live in the classroom. And I think we can make this happen. And for those that we cannot, we have, we have products that we're going to use that's downloaded on their device that doesn't require internet. But they will not have that live teacher. That, they can watch the recording if they go to Grandma's or if they go to the parking lot, if they go to McDonald's, they could go live, could view that live recording any time over the weekend. You know, McDonald's has Wi-Fi, all our parking lots have Wi-Fi. But some of our families don't have cars. So, we've got to have a system in place that addresses the needs of all of our children and provides equality. Equitable services is what we're after.
And right, and there's gonna be things that come up that we don't, you don't even can imagine right now.
No, probably not.
Yeah, that was.
And if, some parents, last board meeting, a lot of parents asked questions on our Facebook post. And I answered every question that night and into the next day. There were some questions that I didn't have answers for yet. And, and two big issues were the vocational, the Ralph R. Willis. And that, the plan for that, you all received that last week. It, they will be at, the tentative plan is that they will be at the Ralph R. Willis two full days a week. Then they will have, the rest of their classes will be virtual or traditional paper pencil with their devices. The other, a lot of questions about special education. And we are formulating a plan to meet those students' IP's. But, and I spoke with Ms. Lucas about it today, but we're not ready to put it out. We wanna make certain we have it correct and have all the legal aspects covered.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Mr. McMillan? Dr. White?
We have, we've been in a state where we've all been asked so, so many various questions. And it's been good in that a lot of times when you're asked a question and you never even thought about this.
And it's good.
And, and this is good. So, I want to encourage all of our viewers to continue as they think of things, to, to jot them down and, and if it's on Facebook, ask that question. So, those people can know because there may be a big issue out there that we haven't even thought about yet. So, I, I appreciate the, the parent involvement, the community involvement in this. I guess before we leave, we have two forms here. And could someone explain what we need to do with them?
Thank you, Dr. White.
Okay.
One of the, I was on the action plan that I'd shared a couple of meetings ago with you all. I think it was meeting before last, that we want, that we want to have screening. We want our teachers to be, our staff, as they come to work, work each morning, to have some sort of screening such as the same as our children. You know, our children, we will be taking their temperatures. Teachers have checklists, they'll be looking for symptoms. So, we have, I think that Ms. Thompson's department was on that action plan. So, we have created two different types of signing sheets. And Ms. Lucas would like for you all to review this and give us your input. On the first one, it's like a screening. Staff would just, as they sign in of the morning, they would answer these questions like fever, cough, shortness of breath, checkbox if yes to any. Travel from high-risk area in the past fourteen days, okay? It's, it's Labor Day and I've been to Myrtle Beach. They would check yes or no. Do you have exposure to a new COVID-19 in the past fourteen days? Date of exposure? And, and usually staff tell us, and we've had this instant, they tell us immediately. And then they sign, and then they put the temperatures either normal or not. Now, this would be one page per day. One page per day. This would be a in-and-out all week. This is one page per week. And we have, they sign in and they, you know, we explain, they'll walk through this device. Their temperature will be taken and they will check either yes or no. And then at that time, they sign out. Now, we want to know what direction that you all want us to go. Do you want a full screening of staff when they come in from work?
If you have the full screening and somebody does the contact survey, it's gonna make life a lot easier for Mr. Bradley.
Yeah, for tracking, I agree.
If you have this, well, there's a reason that they're talking in and out. There's no reason on this where they're gonna talk in and out.
Well, they talk in and out every day.
Yeah, but there's no reason for this form to be, I really want their temperature.
Right.
But, you know, there was one day that this form was probably your best form because it will give you some information there and you can just draw a line through it, keep going the next day. Because your kids are not gonna do this, just your.
Kids, kids, right, just our staff. And any, and, and we could have a visitor form similar to this.
And if they do, you do have a visitor, you could just write visitor.
We, we have different colors. We'll have a notebook for visitors and a notebook.
Tenders and stuff. It's up to you guys, but just seeing how this is working in the setting for us, probably be even better.
Are we going to, I agree, I think this is the form probably we need to go in. Do we need to, to add a later meeting, take formal action or just?
No, it's just, we want your input.
Okay. But seeing this makes me wonder, when we take the children's temperature, are we going to keep records?
No, we, we have, we have no plans to do so.
Okay.
Because the ones who are not normal, we pull it aside and send to isolation. And we would, we would get those names.
Okay.
Now, you just think seven hundred students coming into Chathamville Regional High School in the morning, I think we can take their temperatures, but I do not know if we have the capacity to record everyone's temperature.
Okay.
And if you do have one that's abnormal, then I'm sure the nurse
Oh, yeah.
will do all the documentation after that.
Yeah.
So, you don't have to worry about that child because the nurse will pick up and do all the documentation. This is just for employees.
Yeah, and it's self-reporting.
And really, it looks like a lot, but when we sign in in the morning, most times it's dash, 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 don't you know? But if you have been exposed, then you just say, do whatever, so you don't say anything.
And, you know, you would think that a person would not come to work with the temperature. But teachers are very committed. And sometimes, have I ever come to work sick in my past life? Yes, I have. I've come to work sick because I knew the kids, they needed me that day. And very rarely have I ever missed work as a teacher because of the commitment. And that's how teachers are. So, that's just like, mm, now I gotta tell, I've got a temperature. It probably wasn't good that I came to, I'm not saying it was a good thing, but I'm saying that sometimes people do work when they probably should be home.
I know that in places that I've gone to where I have been asked this information and have my temperature checked, I mean, it went by so fast, I don't even think it took a minute. I mean, maybe a minute's a long time, but the time that took things was just taking the temperature.
Has legal counsel had the opportunity to look over either one of these yet?
I have, and I'm happy to discuss my thoughts on that, if you'd like to do it here or if you'd like to do it.
It's a matter to you all.
Do it here. I mean, we don't have to go back there, I'll do it.
The, with regard to the, to the more extensive form, I don't see any issues with, as Petra mentioned, asking our staff this or having staff self-report this information. I do think we need to be cognizant that this could potentially create concern with regard to privacy of our staff and our employees when this is going to be out in public. And you're gonna see names and you're gonna see answers to questions with every person that comes up and spills this out after that. So, that information is no longer protected information. And I think we need to be very careful about that when we're asking questions like, if there's coughing, if there's shortness of breath, where people have traveled, what potential date of exposure this is. That should be information that is kept private. Not saying we can't ask it, not saying we can't get that information, but making it on a public piece of paper where every staff member is going to see other staff members' answers is something that we need to be very careful about.
If we do go this form and have some form covering the cough and the lacerations.
If there's some way to protect people's answers and identity, I would consider that. Other than, I, I don't like the idea of having each one of our employees' names down here and them checking out personal information, health information about themselves.
Yeah, especially where anybody could walk by and take a picture or anything.
So, I really don't think, um, we must have worked on the privacy issues that somebody does cover it up. And the doctor's office, how they have it, they sign, have they filled it off or, I don't know what they did.
If, if there was some way each morning that staff members could check in electronically and answer those questions? And that's just sent, goes directly to the office, no one would see that except supervisor?
Probably easier if you left with it too, you would have a picture.
Right. Um, if you, another thing, and it may be too complicated to do, but as Stephanie has mentioned, the, the idea of other people seeing your information is an issue. But if, since we're going to do this for everybody, why not just run a sheet? And, right here, my name is Pat White. I come in Monday, you give me my sheet, you take my temperature, I give it back to you. I mean, you could just have, I mean, you could use this sheet because it's a good sheet. But you're gonna have people self-reporting anyway. So, darling, Adkins comes in, darling, here's your sheet. I mean, this, you know, secretary could just hand it to you, take your temperature, you complete it and you have it back. And then no one else sees it.
Or maybe have a box there where you can fold it and drop it in.
Ironically, it sounds good. And most churches are learning.
They, they take student attendance every morning electronically. So, I think we might figure something out.
As far as the second sheet, I don't have any issue with that because this is simply a yes or no, whether temperatures are within in the morning. And so, I don't, I don't think that creates the same, the same kind of issues while you're thinking about these students.
Let us explore electronically, going into electronically.
Now, when they do take their temperature, when they put it in, they just draw a picture there. Because it's, it's gonna be in there in fast pace. There's gonna be, you know, when they come in, they're gonna have, they're gonna have places on the floor, they're gonna stand behind it, like, you know, like they do. And then say here, you know, but who's gonna be the gatekeeper and make sure they do this every day?
Well, it has to be the principal.
So, that's the only thing, that she has to make sure it's filled out every day. And regardless if you have, yes, no, someone has to give the proper, on that, so it, either form, will have to be filled out. Wherever you go, you see this form, this other one.
Okay, let us see what we can, come back on Thursday, see what we can figure out. I've got some ideas already going through my head.
Well, the people on this, this forum here, as I've been asked questions, there's been one person, there, there's been one person asked me these questions, they completed. That, that, I mean, I just see my lines, but I don't sign, I haven't signed anything, you know, so.
Ironically, just comes up and steps out.
Uh-huh, that's the person out.
If everything's good, just sign it in.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna have Kathy Adkins come back up and she's received an update for us.
Hey, what I wanted to tell everybody, after hearing the questions and Debbie's question about sitting in front of the computer, the concerns that the parent had, I text the lady from the State Department and I asked her the question, are the lessons timed to start off with? I heard that comment. These lessons are not timed. These kids have twenty-four seven to complete their lessons. And they're not timed when they log into the computer, their lessons are there already. Okay, so they develop a pacing guide, they pace themselves. And they have twenty-four seven, twenty, seven days a week, it can be on weekends, that they complete these assignments. So, the next thing I asked her, she said, "No, they're not timed." She said, "Some exams are timed, which is normal, but those are AP exams so students can get used to the college board exam style." They do have twenty-four seven access to their lessons. And I put, how do the teachers present the lessons? The content is there when they log in. So, they log into their computer, the content's there, they know their assignment and they work at their own pace. Then it says in elementary, the students meet one time a week with that teacher. That electronic, the teacher that's online, they meet one time a week. So, they do get to have access to that teacher, but they're not sitting there all day long on their computer. So, it's once a week for the elementary with the online teacher face-to-face, you know, with the teams meeting. It said, "High school students who need NCAA eligibility will have a different schedule." So, so far, we haven't had anybody to ask us for that. Other students will schedule appointments as needed. Say someone needs to meet with that teacher more often, they can schedule an appointment with her. And she was telling me that these, it says, "Elementary is live once a week, that's required." And they are scheduled with what works for the family. Not every family is available during the eight to four hours. So, they do it in the evenings and on the weekends. So, I hope that makes everyone feel a little bit better. And what we're doing is this counting on Wednesday, that's completely different than our virtual learning program. I wanna make sure that's clear. Wednesday, when the teachers are live, that's, that's different than this virtual learning program, okay?
So, I can give them more time actually to help the students with anything, any questions they may have or the parenting one, am I, am I correct on that?
Are you saying give the virtual? No, Wednesday is for our in-class students, students who come to school every day.
It's a little different.
They come two days, then half of them come two days, then on Monday, Tuesday, half come Thursday, Friday. They are all on, online with the teacher or some type of remote. I don't wanna use the word remote because only the governor's been called remote. But they will be, all, no students are in-class live on Wednesday. So, all of our students who come for those two days, they will be two days present in a teacher's classroom. And they will be two days, part of the day, they'll have live instruction that's recorded and they can. that's recorded, and they can, they can view it anytime during 24/7. And the difference in live and virtual is that I go to school. I go to school to my regular teacher. Virtual, you have a teacher, but you don't go to a school building. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And now, and Ms. Kathy Adkins mentioned that, there is a pacing guide for virtual. It's not like that, well, I'm going to wait till December to start working on my work. They have to, and she mentioned it just a few minutes ago, they can't get behind. They have deadlines to turn that work in. Yes, they could do it within a 24-hour period, or 48, or 72 hours, or a week, and they can have any time of day to do it, but when it's due, it's due. It's not, well, I didn't get to do my work, and two months later, I turn it in. Virtual does not operate that way. There, it's a pacing guide, and they will get that pacing guide, and they will know when everything is due. Just like in a regular classroom. I don't want them to think they can just do it whenever. They can, but yet there are deadlines.
Did you have anything else? Okay, just want to make sure. All right. Well, we, I guess it's my turn. I will say that I appreciate all the work that's been done so far on the scheduling, on the virtual school, the blended learning model. I know there's been lots of questions, both answered by the community and folks here. Lots of questions have been asked of us, and I appreciate everyone who's provided an update. I'd like to thank Mr. Mark Adkins for providing his update today, as well as Ms. Kathy Adkins. A lot of useful information. I would be remiss if I didn't remind everybody that the superintendent will be reopening the central office here on August 3rd. Everyone will be back to work. That is the plan, on August 3rd. So if the community, if parents have people that need questions answered, that we intend to have people here to answer those questions starting August 3rd. So that's something that I think needs to be announced. I would also reiterate the fact that only the governor, we, I'm sure you all have heard this from the community, only the governor can call for a fully remote start to the school year, meaning that we, we were required, using health guidelines and guidance from the state, to put forth a return to school. We found a consensus and adopted the split schedule with the two days in, in class for Group A, three days online, and then three days online, two days in class for the other group. This is a starting point, as I said last time. If the health situation in Logan County and across West Virginia improves, we have the ability to add additional time in that classroom, whether it be an extra day, whether it be adding in those full days, so we could go back to a four-day model very easily to pick up Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday if we need to, and have that, you know, online day on Wednesday, or if the situation called for it, we could go to five days. But that is all contingent upon the health guidelines and guidance from the state. They have to approve us going back into the classroom, and we have to monitor that, as you know. Everybody is paying attention to the confirmed cases across the county and across the state. We have seen a pretty dramatic uptick in the number of cases over the past week or so. I think as of today, we're at 59.
You mean active?
Active cases, I think we're at 59.
I think we're at 59, 111 came with it.
And four hospitalizations.
Four hospitalized.
So next week, we could double that, or we could have zero next week. Just depends on what happens.
The age range, by the way, is 16 to 85, which 16 obviously covers student.
Student population.
Yeah.
So we, we've developed a plan, this board and administration has developed a plan. We are filling that plan in as the days go by, as we are required to do, to put as much meat on the bone as possible. That way, we can, we know what's going to happen when school starts. Again, the only person that can call a remote start to the school is the governor, and we have to abide by what the state says. So we fully intend at this point to continue with this model, see where we are related to the county health department, and we proceed forward, taking, you know, interest in virtual learning. And we will be out there letting the public know what options are available, and we intend to start school on September 8th under the model that, that we've already approved. But I just want to make that perfectly clear because we've had lots of people ask, why are we not going five days? Why are we not going back remotely? So I just want to make perfectly clear that, that we, we found consensus in the plan that we adopted, and we do have the option to add days if the health situation in Logan County improves over the next month. If there's nothing else, the next thing that we have is executive session. I know that there was discussion of athletic facility bids. That, you're, you're prepared to review that with us?
Yeah.
Okay. That we do have personnel issues that need to be discussed as well as facility issues. So at this time, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Mr. Barry Mullins has motioned.
I'll second.
Dr. Pat Joe White has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's 5-0. We are now in executive session at 6:32 under West Virginia Code 6-9A-4.